Okay, we begin our work session this morning on health insurance. Who wants to start it off, Mark?
That's gonna be me, unfortunately. Commissioners, as you know, I've been trying to keep you up to date on where we're at with our insurance renewal. We have our renewal. We're still trying to work on a few. They call them decrments. What that basically means is we change the quality of the benefit for reduction in what we pay for the benefit. So, we met with our provider, EMTN, and we also met with our broker, Bukety. And we've worked through as much as we possibly can, I think. And we're at a point where I wanted to have a conversation with the Board of Commissioners because for any of the departments to be able to prepare their budget moving forward, we need to know or have some direction from the county commission. And the reason I say that is, our renewal, if that was the only change to the budget, if we kept last year's budget and we did this insurance renewal, it's a 2% or more increase to our overall budget. Not each department has hit the same, but overall, it's 2.2% increase. Well, if I ask the staff to stay at 2.5%, well, you can pretty much then guarantee that that's the only change to their budget would be the insurance.
That includes no employee raises?
No, that doesn't.
No, and I'll get to that. That's the 2.2% is overall hit to the budget. You wouldn't have any other change to your budget except for the health insurance. It'd be 2.2% overall.
And for some of them, it would be even greater, right?
Some departments are more, some are less. It just depends. The departments that are more heavily dependent upon staff, it's more dependent, the ones that have more like consumables, like Bill's department, it's a little less. But overall, to the total budget, it's 2.2%. And like EMS, Jamie and I ran through it, and it was like a 4% change, thereabouts, just for him. His department alone was 4.3, is that right? 4.3% to his overall budget, just for the health insurance.
That's not counting additional capers or KPNF.
No, that's, this is just, this is just this. Only the health insurance.
I was hoping I was out of here before this year came.
The current inflation rate, which again, we know is underreported, but the current inflation rate is 3.5%. That's the current inflation rate. Our, currently for our staff, we're budgeting about $9,000 per employee for the health benefits, which also include our vision dental. It needs to be somewhere between $12,500 to $13,000 in order to cover this. So, with everything on the table, if you give no raises and you have everybody hold a flat budget, which again, 3.5% minimum for inflation, we still are looking at a shortfall in what we can provide for our employees. There's still a shortfall.
I know, you know.
So, there's still about $900,000 that we would need to come up with, $960,000 that we'd have to come up with, even with all of those things taken.
Yeah.
So, you're, and that, you did increase the mill, but that would not include any pay raises. That's taking away the pay raises, that's taking away any adjustments to budgets. That's just the health insurance. So, if, as an example, if the county only picked up the 2.5%, which is what I gave direction, everybody tried to stick to 2.5%. So, of this increase, if the county said, "We're gonna pick up 2.5%, and the rest is gonna get passed on to the staff," that's approximately $150 a month for an individual employee and a little over 300 a month for those on the family plan. And at the same time, that's without them getting a pay increase.
That's additional, Mark?
That's additional. So, we've given a pay increase.
We can't do that.
There's no pay increase, and we're passing, we're taking 2.5% of the increase of the insurance.
You're just passing the cost on. That's a pay cut, then.
It would be a significant pay cut, given inflation and increasing it. So, the reason I'm here today, and I know that this is early for the budget, but again, I don't, I, in order to give direction to staff on how to prepare their budgets, I need to know where the commission is on this subject.
Is there other ways to reduce those costs?
There is.
Higher deductibles?
Well, we've even, we're already increasing deductibles. So, the decrments that are available, which is increase the deductibles, make a few other small changes that are out there. We've, I'm including that in this rate. That's already, I've already put that on the table. I've already assumed we're doing that. So, your out-of-pocket rate for out-of-market usage is doubling. So, it's going to like $20,000, I think, if you go out-of-pocket, it's a family plan. The deductible on the individual plan is going from 1500, I think it's 1500, to 2000, and which then doubles the family. So, the family plan goes from 2,000 to 4,000, or 3,000 to 4,000, excuse me.
And what did you get EMTN down to? What was the increase?
25% is the increase. With the decrments, they take off about a 4%, so 21% is our overall increase. However, we're still making up for, you have to keep in mind, we're making up for last year's increase, too. So, because we adopt our budget, we get the health insurance, so we're also making up for some of that shortfall as well. So, it's not just this year's increase, we're making up for other increases as well.
Well, we also gotta pay this increase in September or October, right?
Yeah, it starts, yeah, it starts.
In the middle of September, you pay your October.
We are, I think we've done what we can to change the plan to get the lowest rate we can. I have one other request out that they're looking at, but we're not talking about tenths of percentages, we're talking about the tenths of percentages. And that's what I'm trying to figure out. So, that's, that's the tough conversation for this today, and I don't, I wish I could provide a solution for you, but I really don't have one. The solution is that, in my opinion, you're looking at a mill levy increase, or you're looking at passing a significant cost on to employees.
Or you're looking at a reduction force or hiring freeze and services cut.
There's, there is, and I've already told Bill, I was gonna say this, so he's not gonna like jump up and leak through the room. There is really only one department where you can make a cut this significant, because everybody else is very staff-heavy. We just talked about, you're talking about the roads department, which is gravel, asphalt, tar, those kinds of things. Those are the things that could be reduced, but we all know what that does.
That's what it's for.
That's how we got in this shape and started.
Yep, we're already paying for that.
That's the first maintenance which ends up costing us more in the long run. We're already deferring maintenance. You would just be doubling down on that. So, that's why I said, in my opinion, you're looking at either passing the cost on or increasing the mill levy. I don't think it's a viable solution to cut from the roads department.
What was the average again, that you said the increase would be?
It's 150 per employee per month, or 300 if they have a family plan.
We can't, we have trouble keeping staff now.
And that would be if no raises for, or cost of living adjustment or anything for 2020.
But this isn't just a county problem. I know this is going on all across the economy, because the railroads, we've got from zero, zero on anything we pay for insurance. When I hired out, we paid nothing and no deductibles. So, we had four children and we paid nothing. And now it's, it's over $600.
Mark, if we have to do, if we have to do, when you do your health plan, do they do it on a yearly usage? If there are three-year percentage they do, they come back to? What I'm saying is, we had a tough year. If next year comes back and we don't have things that were unexpected, that they happen, would it make any difference?
Not yet.
So, they look, when they quote us our original quote, they go back as far back as we can go. That's where we got our original quote, three years ago, I think it was when we started with them. So, then they look at your usage for the time you've been with them, your previous, but really, what they're looking for is forecasting what they think your expenditures are gonna be. So, a bad year, yes, it will impact you, but what's more impactful, so let's say in that bad year, you have some dread diseases that kick in that you can't avoid. They understand you can't avoid those, they assign a cost to those, and they know going forward what that cost likely is, and how long they're going to have to.
Exorb it.
And prescription medications.
But more, more, in our case, more importantly is prescription medications, which inflation is also kicking can on those, too. Our prescription during, like, the COVID years, our prescription usage was around a million dollars a year. In the last year, it's over doubled. We went more than double in prescription. So, we went from a million to 2.2. That, right there, that million-dollar increase there, when they look at that as an insurance provider, they're saying, "That's not going anywhere."
Right.
Those are not one-off drugs. Those are maintenance-style drugs that.
Lifestyle, life, yeah.
So, this is not a, the rate we have, this 25% rate, and now that we've locked EMTN into this, if that's the worst they'll charge us this year, is a bargain. Our broker has ran the same numbers and said our rate should have been 40 to 50% increase. So, unless things change, this is not the only year we're gonna get.
All right. Mark, you're.
They're, they're not in business to lose money.
Right, and you're wanting a suggestion, a recommendation?
I need direction from the Board of County Commissioners on how I handle this.
We cut out all outside agency funding. We sent the letters, we've told everybody, "Do not expect it unless we're contractually or statutorily required," and we use that money to lower this a little more for employees.
You know about, you know about what that totals, Mark, off the top of your head?
But we still have.
That doesn't.
That doesn't solve it.
That doesn't solve it.
It sure would help, though.
It helps, any amount helps.
But it's not a significant amount that we've put into the law.
There's no way I'm gonna vote for a budget. And we're doing this to our employees that funds outside agencies. Well, they have nothing to do with it.
Understand that's your opinion.
That's, I'm just telling you, you're gonna have to get the budget passed without my vote. You've never voted for a budget, so it's gonna have to be one of these.
Oh, yes, I did, one year.
So, a couple of things I wanted to say. The problem I see is, for the last four or five years, we've tried to right the ship of employee benefits and pay. Over the last 30 years, past commissions have mistakenly thought the county budget is why people's property taxes are so high. That's not the problem. If we, if we do this, we're going backwards from what we've worked for so hard the last four or five years of trying to get county employees pay where it should be in a competitive market of the same job. You know, people wanna say, "Oh, you gotta compare to other government agencies." No, that's not how it works. It's, the job market for private agencies also plays a part in this. So, we're trying to fix that. We've lived through 30 years of pay cuts, laying people off, combining departments, combining jobs. All this stuff has culminated into the problems that we saw five years ago, and we're trying to fix that. Same with roads and bridges. We robbed from roads and bridges for the last 30 years, and now stuff's falling apart. So, we've gotta fix these problems, and we can't take a step backwards and say, "Well, we're just gonna do the same thing that they did for the last 30 years." It doesn't work that way.
It's getting more and more expensive.
And in any other business, that's what I was gonna finish up with, any other business owner you talk to has these same issues. You've gotta pay the new people more, you've also gotta take care of the existing people, because the new people are making more than the existing people. How much is their family health insurance coverage now, Monica, per month for family health insurance?
Between 400 and 600.
So, $600 a month for family insurance, you know, you're going backwards. If you ask them to pay 1,200 a month, you're gonna have to double that? It doesn't make any sense.
Mark, what, we started out at 2.5. What percentage do we need to get to so we don't go, on the budget, go down the tubes with the, what you're saying? 2.5 is the medical or whatever. Do we add 2.5 on top of that, or what do we do?
I think you need to, specifically, what I, because I wanna be very clear with this request would be, specifically, you would have to commit to a mill levy increase of 1 to 1.5 mils, just to fund the employee benefits increase. The 2.5% would then still be on the table for the departments to stick to, which would include pay raises and any other adjustments, which is still less than inflation.
Well, what's the, what's the mill levy total when you put those two together? What are you looking at? You have the 1.5, and you're looking at two mils for the budget? What are you?
No, no, no. So, the increase, again, if the, if the department's coming in with 2.5% for this, I mean, then we would be looking at a 1.5-mill levy increase.
Okay. Just to fund the insurance portion. Now, is there other, I don't wanna really get deep into the actual budget department as far as this part of it. Is there other things that we can do? Can we incentivize folks that have spouses that have insurance? Can we offer them an incentive to get off of our insurance and get on the?
We already do.
We already do that.
I mean, I mean, but is there additional things?
Yeah, in fact, we cut that back.
Along those lines?
A few months ago, we reduced that.
Yeah, they get a stipend or an amount of money to do that.
I'm just thinking of other ways we can cut the costs.
So, one of the things that, you could increase that opt-out pay, but that doesn't mean that anybody is additional is going to actually opt out. It just means the people who are already off will get more.
And if they opt out, you're still looking at having somebody that just says, "Okay, I just won't have insurance," and then that's gonna cost ultimately?
Well, they can't do that. They have to.
They have insurance.
They need other spouse insurance.
So, the, one of the things I looked at also is why, why are we, one of, one part of this big change is, our role is higher now than it was last year at the same time. We have more people participating in our plan, and we have the opt-out. So, I don't know that increasing the opt-out or changing that will increase the number of people off our plan, but even if you add, if you take, let's say, five more people take it, you know, that's $65,000 out of a 1 to 1.5%.
Off the bucket.
And at some point, hopefully, some of the, we had some pretty serious illnesses and things that happened in the recent past, that after about three or four years, if we don't have any more major illnesses that cost outside of the norm, then we won't see this type of.
Well, I'm gonna give you a real quick example. When we were looking at the numbers, so when we got the renewal, the history that they had was, let's say they're looking at the last 12 months, three years, whatever it was. The month since we've gotten the renewal, the month that fell off, we had a 59% utilization, which is good. The month that came on, we had 150% utilization. So, our most recent month, which was last month, our utilization was 150% over what our current rate is. So, that's why I said, our broker looked at this and said, "This is a bargain. It should have been 40 to 50."
Right, right.
They're, they're working with you because you've been with them for three years, and they want to continue to work with you. But it's, I, I've looked, I've worked with our broker, I've worked with staff, we've had committee meetings on this, Sheriff's Office was included, but they weren't able to attend today because of another commitment. We've tried to do what we can. We have some proposals that we're working with to try to get people to be healthier, to help, but those cost a little bit of money, too, minimal compared to this. But overall, I think from changing the plan, we've done everything we can. There's, our providers not even offering us.
Right, we're there.
There are certain things you can do, like your deductibles have to be what they have to be, you can't go over a certain threshold. I think we've made the changes to the plan that we can make. I think we've brainstormed this from staff's perspective that we can, and if I thought I could fit this in, I wouldn't even be here today, we would've just brought it as part of the budget. But I don't see how I can ask the departments to pick this up and try to provide you 2.5% when I know from the average is 2.2%.
So, what's the dollar amount on that 2%, 2.2%? What's the actual dollar amount?
You mean across the entire, somewhere around 1.5 million dollars? It's 2, it's like 1.5 to 2.8 million.
So, then that's, that's the hole in the budget, is 1.5 million dollars.
That's why I said it's about 1.5 million.
That's just for the health insurance.
That's just the health insurance. But covering that, then allows the 2.5 that we've already given direction to staff to try to stay.
And of course, we don't have the building.
Right, that's why I said.
That's a, that's a horse of different color, because that is a one-time expenditure versus an operational ongoing expenditure. Dealing with a one-time expenditure, while it's tough, is doable. The ongoing cost of this is, because what I'm asking you is not just today.
It's gonna be ongoing.
This is every year going forward, unless we get some wonder drug that everyone hits real healthy and nobody has any claims, and our benefits go back down. I don't see this ever going to be.
Sounds like it's time to bite the bullet. And we can't, can't be on the state of Kansas health insurance. They don't allow that on a procurement contract, do they?
I think we've already been.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think they can. I don't think we can.
It wasn't that good anyway.
Any, so, sometimes, you know, we talked about if we go out to market, we might get a low-ball rate, but then next year.
Introductory rate offer.
But that introductory rate is still going to be, no one's gonna come in and say, "Hey, we're gonna be flat." No way.
Yep, 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 yep.
If you go to some of these government pools, like the, across the state line, they have one that we could participate in, that they actually, because the way they run, they run it very tight, they wouldn't give us any rate. They would look at our usage, and they would probably hit us with the full. So, I just.
I don't think there's any way the employees can stand this kind of an increase. And I think we need to look at either a hiring freeze or reduction in force to help try to offset this.
I mean, when they're trying to say that, you know, it's only what inflation is what, but yet, go to the grocery store.
Well, you know, I think you mentioned that every business is dealing with this type of thing. There's a reason why your drive-through bill is two to three times what it used to be.
Right. We don't have that option.
Yeah, there's a reason why. So, this, when you go to McDonald's, Burger King, I don't wanna single any of them out because they're all the same thing, Subway, whatever.
Wendy's.
Your bill is twice or three times what it used to be.
Yeah, three times.
Well, for us, we don't sell sandwiches.
Maybe we should.
We levy tax. So, our increase, we've been fortunate with the valuations going up.
New construction.
We could sell bills to them.
But this year is a year where we have.
Or the second best.
That's why we are.
Okay, we go in the chili business. We're going in the chili business. We're gonna sell chili.
Jamie's gonna have that extra ambulance, be a food truck.
So, so do you have?
Okay, just a little bit of levity for a serious situation.
It's like the employees, I mean, you're not, say they're an hourly 150.
Double them up?
Then we have, like, say, okay, we'll split that to 75.
Just have a magnetic sign.
Split 75, figure out on the budget end where we're gonna fund the other $75, and that gets you down to around, what's your 900,000 rate?
There's no, I don't want there to be a false perception that we're going to find this in the budget as a current. You, you could pass a half of it on to the employees, and the county pick up half.
But we're gonna lose more employees.
That still is, still, that's still over 1% of the total budget, so the departments then are still looking at no pay increases. I mean, that's, that's where it has to come from.
Going backwards.
We can't, we can't pay less for trucks.
And Mike, we just had the discussion of pay for.
Well, I mean, you're gonna have to figure out, you're not gonna be able to take it all from one source. You're probably gonna have to do, it's gonna have, probably be a combination, a little bit from here and then a little bit from here. You're probably not gonna be able to absorb the whole thing.
What you're talking about is reduction in services.
Yeah.
And we're eliminating positions.
That we don't want.
And we have already reached the minimum level of assets and services in every department.
And if we continue to say we're gonna put it on the back of the Public Works Department vice, then then we're delaying maintenance again, if we try to put it on the back of building and grounds, we're delaying maintenance, and none of those get cheaper. It becomes more expensive every time we make a decision that's, that's not based on sound.
We're getting really close to closing roads that's got bridge, a deficient bridge on. We're close, and it's gonna happen in the next few years.
And we, you know, I'm just saying, and we just had a conversation about the fact that if we, if we, if we push that, these expenses, many of our expenses onto our employees, then we have people that are, when we're talking about trying to keep roads repaired and things, we have operators who at that point will say, "You know what? It's not worth staying here, because I can go into the private. I can take, take it to the private sector and make a significant amount more money and have benefits as well."
And they're gonna be replaced by somebody who needs trained, and that costs a lot of money to train an employee.
And they're willing to do that, but, but the point is, we're 1.5 million dollar shortfall is what it amounts to, and you gotta go into the budget and figure out where you're gonna come up with 1.5 million dollar shortfall. And if part of it means that it's gonna be employee cost sharing, that's gonna have to be the way it's gonna be.
That's what I'm asking.
I disagree.
You disagree with what? I mean, that's, you're gonna have to figure out a way to make that 1.5 million up.
Well, you're making that 1.5 million up because we have been delaying and not doing what we should have been doing for, on this Board of County Commissioners, in my opinion, for the past five years. So, we're partially responsible for why we are here and where we're, why we're having this conversation today.
So, we're partially responsible for the fact that the health insurance across the country is going up at this rate?
No, we're partially responsible for the fact that we have delayed some of the things that, that we would have put into different budgets, so that the budget for, let's say, for building and grounds, or for EMS, or all of those budgets, that we have said we want to reduce, reduce whenever we can, that you're just putting it off, and every time you put something off, it becomes more expensive.
Well, I respectfully disagree, because I think that we've tried to come up with very good budgets.
I agree, but I'm just, but.
But what she's saying is, you put something off that costs $5 last year, it costs $20 the next year.
And I don't disagree.
Does every year, the employees in the county pick up a little bit more, or is it all, it's just been flat?
Employee share has been flat for five or six years.
The county's picked it up.
The county's picked it up.
And we still have a large turnover.
Yep. Eighty-seven employees in the last 12 months, last time I checked, is what.
I just don't think if we're gonna save money if we have people that.
Is that the cost of insurance?
At a 400.
Has been.
At a 400.
Last five years.
We know what that means.
I'm the only one that's, that's up for not being re-elected, so it's like, come on, guys, get tough.
So.
So, you're in favor of absorbing the entire amount?
You're gonna have to, because we're gonna go backwards with the employee benefits and pay that we've worked so hard for five years to catch up. And Mike, I know you're saying that because you haven't experienced the county employee benefits and pay for the last 30 years.
I've said it, 42.
I've experienced what's happened the last five years, is what I've experienced.
That's right. That's exactly right. And what you've seen is us trying to catch up the damage that was done over 30 years.
And that's what I'm saying. And that's why you see that way.
It's just like, it's just like a family. We're sitting around the table.
You're right.
We've had an extra expense come down.
Or we could put a kid up for adoption.
We gotta figure out how we're gonna pay for that.
You're right.
Mike, you're gonna lead the family.
You're right, Mike. It is like that.
Well, there is one difference.
Sometimes you have to get a divorce, remember?
Family member can't get up and go live with the neighbor next door who has a lot more money. In a county, our employees can get up and go to the neighbor next door who has a lot more.
Yeah, they can divorce us, and then it becomes a lot more expensive.
That's right.
Yeah, I hate that word.
Well, but, it's a tough decision. I mean, and I understand that, but what I'm saying is that we can't, I mean, we, and we're not totally responsible for what's happened in the past, but all of those decisions that have been made in the past are finally coming home to roost.
Along with what the mess the country's in.
Right, and, and we can't, but we can't control that either. We have no control over that.
But there's been some good things in the last five years. We have funded over 20% of employee raises.
I agree. I agree.
It's gone up over 20%.
But that's.
Because they were behind 40.
But I'm just saying that you gotta look at the good things, and now we have hit a, we've hit a bump here, we gotta figure out where the 1.5 million's gonna come.
It's a wall.
Yep.
Well, I made my recommendation, and I mean, I think we have to look at reducing staff or a hiring freeze or something, or what percentage it would take to get to where we need to be.
We can't have a hiring freeze in the EMS.
Well, I mean, it has to be.
Essential services.
Yeah, but.
You know, I mean.
I don't know. You don't want an answer from us today, do you?
That, that's a good, a good point. So you got EMS, you got the Sheriff's Office, really you have the, any of the elected department heads, that would be a challenge to eliminate positions in those because they have to agree to that as well.
And we also have to agree to their budget, though.
Right, so you have, let's take EMS, Sheriff, likely Public Works, because if you reduce services there, then you just, you're deferring maintenance on roads. So then that doesn't leave a lot of places where you eliminate positions for road. The change in that magnitude, it's probably, you know, to be safe, you probably need to plan on 20 employees that you need to position. You'd have to.
Only way to get this person.
And we can look at attrition that's existing right now and see how much negative impact it has had on, you know, the, the different departments, but it, there cannot be a positive impact whatsoever on the, the, right now, the open positions in, on EMS. Can't. I mean, that's just, that is putting more strain and stress on the existing employees, which is.
That ends up costing you way more.
Right. I, I, I just think that we've.
Okay, I've been through this before, '08, when we were doing the '09 budget, and we did not have the inflation like we got now.
Right.
It wasn't that, and we wrecked it a lot of people.
But Mike wasn't here then. Mike didn't really experience that. That's all I'm just saying, is, you, you haven't seen what's happened.
Okay, then we're gonna have to make sure that we have some staff or enough funding for those.
I lived through those times as well.
A lot of other organizations that have to absorb people that are having depression and no home or.
You just gotta look at where you're gonna get to 1.5, and I think you gotta have some employee cost share as part of it. I think that, that's better.
That's your opinion?
Be what we kind of decide is, are, what approach do we want Mark to take?
Yes, that's what I'm looking.
I mean, I, my suggestion is that we have him come back with a proposal, and I think it has to involve some cost share, if you could find out a way to, I mean, if the insurance company, if you could find out any other ways that they can reduce costs.
They can.
I know you've done all you can, but.
We're talking on those, like I said, we're talking tenths of a percent.
Yeah, but, but it has to involve some, somewhat of an employee cost share, and somewhat of a, figuring out where that other money's coming from.
So that's your opinion. My opinion is, none of this can go on to the county's back, employees' back, because we are still trying to dig out of a hole that we dug for 30 years. We can't ask the employees to burden any more than they've already done.
Okay, but you're gonna ask the taxpayers?
That's my opinion. That's the way, I'm just saying, that it's, because it's that way everywhere. You keep tying it back to tax dollars, and that's exactly why we're in the mess we're in, because past commissions always said, well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to cut the county employees' benefits because the taxes are too high. Yeah, about six or eight ways it can be solved, but.
If the LADTR would've come back to the county, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
That's one of them, and that's the, that's the problem.
We would not be having this.
The real problems are not getting addressed, and so we're having these conversations.
I would like to give the employees a 10% raise.
I know, I know.
I mean, that's, that's my druthers.
But see, what we're doing.
But when we're doing an actual budget, you gotta look at the numbers, and we're 1.5 million dollars short.
And we're also resort, we are rewarding the state of Kansas for a decision that they made not to return us the dabbling money that we are owed, and that, and we're rewarding them when we do, when we make this type of decision that says we're gonna put this onto the back of our employees, or that we're not, that we're going to figure out something else to do. We're rewarding that decision that they made to do what they've done to us as, in my opinion, some kind of retribution and a punishment, because we have the audacity to call them out for what they have done and not following the law.
So for me, it's this simple. You can't pay a dump truck driver $30 an hour, which is, say that's the comparable rate, he can go anywhere and get a job for $30 an hour. You can't say, well, we're gonna pay him 15 because it's tied to county taxes. That's what you're trying to do.
I don't wanna pay 15.
I know, but you're, you're saying because it's tied to taxes, that's what we're gonna pay.
I do not wanna put this full 1.5 million dollars on the taxpayer.
That's what I'm saying.
You wanna put it on a county employee?
I, no, I, I said we gotta, we gotta go through a process where we share, cost share, and get, and figure out where we're gonna, I would suggest that we have the county administrator develop a proposal and kind of lay out maybe a couple options for us.
I think he has.
Well, but he's looking for direction on whether we wanna include cost share.
I think that we, that this commission needs to kind of think about this and maybe individually talk to Mark about what our recommendations are, and he can go through that and come back with some.
Mark, when's your valuation up? We can tie this in as what you tell us.
I saw that coming.
This is not easy.
I'm only jayday, Mark.
I just don't see how we can do it without at least some type of hiring freeze, reduction in forces. We gotta take care of, we just can't have a mass exodus of employees.
Mark, when you, now that you've said this to us, let, give us some time to let it go through a noggin, and, and when do you need to, when do you wanna have a meeting back together so you can get direction? Because I've gotta think on this a little bit.
Sure. Well, you know, we have to get going on our open enrollment, so I need to be able to make a decision, but also, like, our budgets are due Friday of this week. That's why I was trying to get some direction before then. I can let the departments know we can extend that budget deadline out, give them, basically until I know which direction the commission's going, it's hard for me to have.
Well, I don't think it'll take long. I, I just need to.
I don't wanna look at last year's, over last year's.
Yeah, I just need, I just need a week or so and ask some questions. But I'm gonna tell you right now, I do not support, I've been on both sides of this. As a city manager in 2008, we had to freeze some things. I do not support not, not taking care of the employees, and that, and it costs, it costs, and I'm, I'm one that's always fought to keep that mill levy low. So that's why I need to think about this.
And like I said, if we were paying a lot and people were coming in droves to the counties to get a county job, then I'd say, let's cut the employees' benefits a little bit. But we're not even caught up to paying people what they should be paid, so you can't go backwards.
I don't know where you're gonna get to a number where you're gonna think they're paying what they should be paying, because we're never gonna get there. We're, we're never gonna get to where we should pay employees of Lower County what they should be paying.
Well, I'm not there. Why do you say that?
And just to note, the past five years, we've increased salaries more than 20%. So it's, we can't sit, sit here and say that we haven't had a commitment to the employees of Lower County.
I agree.
I'm not saying to go.
But on the other hand, where we're, whether we have to use cost share for making up part of that 1.5 million, I think that's a different question.
But you wanna just wipe out what we've done in five years, all in one year?